We would now like to call to order this January the 21st, 2022 special school board meeting of the Lynchburg City School Board. And our first order of business tonight as we have called our meeting to order moves us to section B for electronic participation. Members of the board per policy BDD individual board members are granted the opportunity to participate in a special meeting electronically. And I do want to present the name of Dr. Atul Gupta, who has a temporary health matter that prevents his physical attendance tonight. What is the pleasure of the board to allow Dr. Gupta to participate in this special meeting electronically?
I move...
I second.
Second.
Okay, thank you. It's been moved by Ms. Morrison, seconded by Mr. Tross that Dr. Gupta be allowed to participate electronically. Any further questions or discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
School Board Member, Mr. Tross.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Brennan.
Yes.
School Board Member, Ms. Morrison.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Carter.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Coleman.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Nellis.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Senhai.
Yes.
School Board Member, Mr. Harvey.
Yes.
Thank you, members of the board. And Dr. Gupta, you feel free to chime right in. You are equally a part of this discussion and the chair will yield, as I'm aware, or any board member makes me aware of your desire to engage in input. Members of the board, prior to going to section C, the agenda of the approval, agenda approval, I'm asking that the board would please permit the chair to recommend a motion to suspend the rules for our special school board meeting as it relates to public comments. This is a special meeting and there will be some differences as it relates to public comments tonight. What is the pleasure of the board to suspend the rules?
I move that we suspend the normal rules and increase the time for public comments to a total of 60 minutes for this meeting.
It's been moved by Dr. Nellis. Is there a second? Dr. Brennan?
Yes, sir.
Any further questions or discussion? This motion does require two-thirds majority. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
School Board Member, Mr. Tross.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Brennan.
Yes.
School Board Member, Ms. Morrison.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Carter.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Nellis.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Senhai.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Gupta.
Yes.
School Board Member, Mr. Harvey.
Yes.
Motion carries now to zero.
And Madam Clerk, I have a resounding yes. Yes. That's fine. All right. That now moves us to section G of our special school board meeting, the agenda approval. Members of the board, the agenda has been featured and we have agreed on what would be discussed tonight. What is the pleasure of the board to approve the agenda for our special school board meeting?
I move that we approve the agenda for our special school board meeting.
All right. Dr. Nellis, Dr. Carter has made the motion. Is there a second?
I second.
Seconded by Dr. Nellis. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
School Board Member, Mr. Tross.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Brennan.
Yes.
School Board Member, Ms. Morrison.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Carter.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Coleman.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Nellis.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Senhai.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Gupta.
Yes.
School Board Member, Mr. Harvey.
Yes.
Motion carries now to zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. At this time, we do want the public to recognize that it was very important to us that we hear from the public tonight as well, that the board might be appropriately prepared. We would like to entertain a motion now that we convene a brief closed meeting to discuss the following as permitted by the Virginia Code, Section 2.23711A7, consultation with legal counsel. Is there such a motion?
I move to go into closed session.
Second.
Been moved by Dr. Nellis, seconded by Dr. Carter, that we will go into closed session for the said purpose. Any further question or discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
School Board Member, Mr. Tross.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Brennan.
Yes.
School Board Member, Ms. Morrison.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Carter.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Coleman.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Nellis.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Senhai.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Gupta.
Yes.
School Board Member, Mr. Harvey.
Yes.
Motion carries now to zero.
Thank you, board. We will now go to room 206 and be back as quickly as we can in closed meeting. Thank you very much. We'll be right back.
...
Remove that we come out of the closed session.
The move by Dr. Carter and seconded by Ms. Morrison that we come out of the closed session. Madam Clerk, if you would please call the roll.
Scoop up, my member Tros.
Yes.
Scoop up, my member Dr. Brennan.
Yes.
Scoop up, my member Ms. Morrison.
Yes.
Scoop up, my member Dr. Carter.
Yes.
Scoop up, my member Dr. Coleman.
Yes.
Scoop up, my member Dr. Nellis.
Yes.
Scoop up, my member Dr. Senhai.
Yes.
Scoop up, my member Dr. Gupta.
Yes.
Scoop up, my member Mr. Harvey.
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
We would now like to certify that the closed meeting just concluded in that meeting that nothing was discussed except the matter or matters specifically identified in the motion to convene in a closed meeting and lawfully permitted to be so discussed under the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act cited in that motion. We will now certify that as the case and Madam Clerk, we will start with Mr. Tros.
Scoop up, my member Mr. Tros.
Yes.
Scoop up, my member Dr. Brennan.
Yes.
Scoop up, my member Ms. Morrison.
Yes.
Scoop up, my member Dr. Carter.
Yes.
Scoop up, my member Dr. Coleman.
Yes.
Scoop up, my member Dr. Nellis.
Yes.
Scoop up, my member Dr. Senhai.
Yes.
Scoop up, my member Dr. Gupta. Scoop up, my member Mr. Harvey.
Yes.
So noted as certified.
Thank you so much. We will now move to Section E, which is going to include a special presentation from the Virginia Health Department, Dr. Edwards.
Yes, so we have invited Dr. Gately and Callie Anderson from the Health Department to kind of give us an update on COVID in our community. And I believe Director Brown, up there is Dr. Gately, I can see him there. So I will quickly just turn it over to Dr. Gately and Callie Anderson to kind of give us update. And then if the board has any questions, they can ask at the end of your quick update. So, Dr. Gately.
I'll ask Kaylee, if she would, to please go over the numbers first.
Sure. So right now, in the Central Virginia Health District, we are seeing the highest case numbers we have ever seen so far in this pandemic, with average daily cases above 400 and weekly cases above 3,000. Our vaccination rates remain at about 52% for the city of Lynchburg, and our outbreaks remain at an all-time high as well. We are currently seeing quite a number of Omicron cases in our region, which, as you all are aware, is much more highly transmissible than any previous strain that we have seen in the past, which is leading to our increased cases that we are seeing. Pass it over to you, Dr. Gately.
Thank you, Kaylee. There's so much that could be said about all of this. I'm wondering at this question, at this point, if I might just entertain questions from Board members about what you would like to hear about.
All right. Members of the Board, question for Dr. Gately. Dr. Brennan?
I'm not sure if I put my hand up, but I'll take advantage of the opportunity to talk to Dr. Gately. So, Dr. Gately, as our Public Health Medical Director, and having been so helpful in directing our community through this pandemic for the last two years, can you look in your crystal ball for us and help us with what you see coming down the line? And what changes you would predict that we're going to see in the future to deal with this pandemic?
Unfortunately, my crystal ball is cracked, but sort of peering dimly into the future. I think what's going to be really interesting now is what happens to this Omicron peak that we are seeing and that Kaylee was referring to. What happens after that? We know that things we learned when the pandemic was starting back in March 2020, back when the pandemic was starting with the Alpha variant, the early variants. We did a lot of studies, we learned a lot, developed a vaccine. And then, of course, we've gone through some other variants, and then most recently, the Delta variant. And the Delta variant had different properties than what we were seeing in the Alpha as far as its infectiousness and as far as the level of disease, the level of illness that would cause. And so, you know, part of the issue that we have looking forward is just how much of the past do we take with us? How much of what we learned in the past do we take forward in the future? And how predictable will the, probably the inevitable new variants that are going to arise be? And how will they compare to what we're dealing with today? There's been a lot of talk, the word endemic being thrown around a lot. And there are actually several different definitions of the term endemic. But I'm really looking to the World Health Organization to make that determination, because a pandemic by definition is a worldwide phenomenon. And so, it's not only what goes on in the United States, it's going to be a matter of what goes on in the rest of the world that determines what kind of patterns, what kind of variants and everything that we see in the future. I think it's safe to say that we're going to be dealing with COVID for some time to come. But we may not deal with it in the same ways that we have been dealing with it in the past or even that we're dealing with it now. And I think we're starting to see evidence of that from all over the world. I was noticing, for example, in the Jerusalem Post that the Israelis are really starting to cut back on their COVID activities with children. I'm noticing in the United Kingdom that a lot of the mitigation measures, the big, large, population-wide mitigation measures that they had been putting in place are going to be allowed to expire over the next few weeks and won't be reintroduced unless something unexpected happens with that. So I think all over the world, we're seeing examples of people, peoples trying to figure out how we're going to move forward with this. But I think, Dr. Brennan, if I could speak in general terms, I don't think we're going to deal with COVID in the future in the same way that we've dealt with it in the past. And as a matter of fact, as a case in point, right before this meeting started, Governor Youngkin issued a press release on guidance for K through 12 schools. Kaylee and I both got that about the same time, have not even really had a chance to read through the whole thing with any thoroughness. But I noticed in that press release that Governor Youngkin makes several points about how maybe we're going to start doing things differently in the future with regard to contact tracing, for example, is one thing that is mentioned in there. I've still got to digest that, we've still got to work on that. We have a joint meeting between BDH and VDOE Monday morning at nine, which I think we're going to talk about those, the guidance and how we're going to implement the guidance more. But I think we're going to still need to deal with COVID, but we're just going to deal with it in different ways. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Gately. Any other member of the Board would like to ask Dr. Gately a question?
I have a question.
Dr. Gupta.
Dr. Gately, so how do you think we'll achieve herd immunity going forward? As you see, we'll be doing things differently. Are you referring to that we'll have a herd immunity moving forward? Has this more variants come in?
I don't think, at this point, this is my personal opinion. You know, we never really achieve herd immunity with flu, with influenza. Part of the reason is the way that the influenza virus mutates. Some of it has to do with changing immunity, waning immunity. Everybody's pretty used to the idea of getting a flu shot every year. And very often, the components of that flu shot are different than they were the year before. I don't know that SARS-CoV-2 is going to mutate at that level, at that rate. But particularly what we've seen with waning immunity, both natural and vaccine-induced immunity, says that I don't see us reaching a particular time, particularly if you go back to what I was referring to earlier with the worldwide experience, the worldwide pandemic. I don't see a time in which the great majority of humans, the great majority of human kinds, will be immune at once. I think what you have is, as you have more localized outbreaks, perhaps a spike, a peak, like we're seeing here. And that will leave a certain level of immunity, plus we continue our vaccine efforts. That will leave a certain level of immunity that won't necessarily last. So the herd, if you will, and I like to think in terms of my herd, the people that I live with, people I interact with, day by day, will maybe have a momentary herd immunity in small groups or in cohorts, if you will, that will wane over time. And then eventually, somebody from outside, somebody will introduce SARS-CoV-2, whatever variant, again into that group, and we're liable to continue to see outbreaks. Again, like we do with the flu. So I think that the herd immunity itself, I think this virus is too adaptable. And I think we don't understand the immunity to it well enough yet to say that we'll ever achieve a time when there'll be enough herd immunity across the world to keep us from having continued outbreaks.
Thank you. Anyone else with a question? All right, well, we want to thank you both for sharing with us tonight, Dr. Edwards. Anything else regarding the presentation?
No, but thank you again, Dr. Gately and Ms. Anderson, for joining us and just giving us an update for COVID in our community.
As I mentioned, there is going to be a meeting with superintendents on Monday morning, and I'm sure that we'll be talking a lot more, Dr. Edwards.
All right, thank you very much. We will now move to Section F, which is our public comment section that we included for this special meeting because of our desire to hear from the public. And we have suspended the rules that will afford us a time period of 60 minutes tonight. And between Madam Clerk and Dr. Edwards, someone will keep the chair informed on the time. As usual, if you're representing a group, there would be five minutes. Otherwise, there would be three minutes for those who are going to give comments in public. I do have a list before me of 15 persons that have signed up to speak in person, three of which it appears to be wanting to represent a group. We also want to acknowledge that the Board received 24 emails. Six of them asked to be read in person, and Dr. Carter will read as many of those as time will permit as well. And then we also have three voicemail comments that would like to be shared. With that in mind, we won't have any problem with this at all, I know. But I do want to just state it with clarity before we get moving. And that is, tonight's public comments will be limited to the LCS Health Mitigation Plan Executive Order II matters pertaining to masks, et cetera. There should be no discussion around Executive Order I or any other executive order or any other matter unrelated to the purpose of this special call meeting. If by chance you drift from that focus, the chair will politely gavel and ask you to surrender the mic. With that having been said, let me acknowledge persons appearing before the School Board would not be allowed to campaign for public office or promote private business ventures, and should not use profanity or vulgar language or gestures, make comments about a public official or an employee that are not related to their official duties, engage in behavior that disrupts the meeting or intimidates others or addresses the School Board on issues that do not concern the services, policies, role, and/or responsibilities of the School Board. Individual speakers shall limit their comments, as has been stated, to three minutes. Group comments would be five minutes. And the representatives shall identify the group at the beginning of their presentation. The group would have no more than one spokesperson. And of course, we've allotted tonight's meeting time to be one hour because we want to hear from everyone. So with that having been said, once again, the Board does not respond to comments, answer questions, or otherwise engage in discussion at this time. But please know that we are listening as responsive listeners when we get into our discussion a little later. To give deference to those who are in person, let's start with our persons, our public comments that are in person first. And our first speaker, if I happen to get any of their names incorrect, please forgive me. But Rachel Gaggen will like to come and speak to us tonight. Please, welcome.
Good evening. I stand in front of you as a frontline healthcare worker. I've also been a parent to two Lynchburg City School students for 10 years. I've served on the School Health Advisory Board for eight years. And I lead a coalition called Live Healthy Lynchburg for the past 10 years. I'm a scientist, I'm a mother, I'm a Christian, and I'm a health advocate. For the last 15 years, Lynchburg City Schools has trusted me to make medical decisions about your students. I have filled in countless health forms with detailed recommendations about concussions, allergies, ADD, anxiety, accommodations for disabilities, and medications. My training and my signature gets you off the hook legally for kids missing gym, carrying epinephrine pens, having extra bathroom breaks, getting academic accommodations, including classroom aids, and even missing required vaccines. LCS has trusted me and community doctors like me to make critical decisions about whether it is safe for a student to be at school. I serve as an independent advocate for your students, sometimes at odds with the wants and desires of their parents. I will not let a concussed football player play in a championship football game. I will not let a kid with severe mono take an AP exam. I will not excuse a truant parent. I have great respect for your position on the School Board where you must make decisions that cannot make everyone happy. I need you to understand how unhappy COVID and I have made people over the past year. I have told parents that vacations to Disney, sleepovers at grandma's, and birthday parties need to be canceled or rescheduled for the greater good. I have told teenagers that we don't have cures for long COVID symptoms. And yet, in comparison, telling kids to wear masks is pretty simple. Study after study around the world has shown decreased rates of illness, hospitalization, and death in communities where we wear masks. This is supported by guidelines from the CDC, Virginia Department of Health, and the AAP. I survived nine months of face-to-face contact with COVID prior to vaccines because I wear masks. The rates of COVID right now, as Dr. Gately just pointed out, are far above the surge we had in the fall. I swabbed sick kids all day on Tuesday, and I counted up my numbers. 80% of them were positive for COVID. While I believe that parents absolutely have the right and responsibility to make the best choice for their child, I also believe that by enrolling a child in public school, we agree to a social contract whereby we benefit more than we sacrifice. If a parent wants their child to attend a school unmasked, there are choices at private schools in our region. Unfortunately, those schools are not testing or contact tracing in a way that would demonstrate how many infections they are seeing. But I have seen them in my office in significant numbers. If you, as the Board, choose to stop universal masking at this time for Lynchburg City Schools, there will be an increase in number of sick children in our community. The majority of spread has been at home, not at school. Masking has worked to keep kids safely in school. Children have survived COVID with only 2,000 hospitalizations, 17 deaths in our Commonwealth.
Time has expired for the individual?
I'm representing the group Live Healthy Lynchburg. I thought that I had five minutes. I'm so sorry.
It doesn't say it here. Please go right, you have five, it just doesn't say group on my.
I'm so sorry.
Please go right ahead.
Thank you. So, 17 deaths in our Commonwealth. If we stop universal masking, that will increase. How many preventable pediatric deaths should we tolerate? Furthermore, the disturbing rates of long COVID symptoms make this unpalatable. We have the ability to prevent long-term health problems in our children with masks. If we stop masking right now, the adults in our community will have increased hospitalizations and deaths. Our hospital is already close to a breaking point. The healthcare providers of our community are begging for your help. If we stop masking right now, we will reach critical staffing shortages in our schools, and we will have to return to virtual schooling for the third consecutive academic year. And this will be devastating. Over the past two years, your Board has made unpopular decisions to prioritize the safety of our community under great pressure to do otherwise. Our children have benefited greatly by the option to safely return to in-person instruction. Their physical and mental health has been dependent on knowing that the whole school is following CDC guidelines. Our children have adapted. They are wearing their mask quite well, much better than adults around them. We must not put yet another burden on our underpaid, overworked teachers to have them police certain children to wear masks but not others. This will end up in a free-for-all. Executive Order II did not intend for six-year-olds to decide whether or not they wear their mask and whether or not their teacher gets sick. If my word has ever meant anything to you before, please take this note. Please continue universal masking for Lynchburg City School students until at least this surge has abated. Dr. Rachel Gaggen, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Thank you tonight. Our next speaker, Andrew Glover, representing the conservative parents of Lynchburg. Welcome, Mr. Glover.
Good evening, Lynchburg City School Board. My name is Andrew Glover, and tonight I represent the conservative parents of Lynchburg, a group of over 360 Lynchburg families, teachers, and LCS staff members. $12 million, $12 million, that's how much Lynchburg City Schools collected in grant money in 2018, 2019, prior to COVID-19. money in 2018, 2019, prior to COVID-19. Since COVID, that number has actually increased substantially. That grant money comes from a number of sources, but almost the majority of it is all funneled through the state of Virginia. That's also the amount that Lynchburg City Schools stands to potentially lose if they choose to defy the executive order issued by Governor Youngkin in response to his recent Tonight, you're here to discuss that change in that order. But I want to pause for a moment and remember something that isn't changing, hasn't changed, and will never change. The question is this: Who loves our students the most? Is it the school board? No, it's not. It's our parents. No matter how much you claim to be doing in the best interest of our students, you can never claim to love these students more than their parents. It's because of this unsurpassed love and care that parents have for their children that makes them uniquely qualified to understand their children, understand their needs, understand their medical conditions, understand their social growth, and understand a whole variety of other aspects that make that child unique. And through that unique understanding, make decisions for their children on all matters ranging from education to health and beyond. Lynchburg City Schools' motto claims every child by name and by need to graduation. However, without parents, that's an aspiration that is unachievable because the school board simply does not love the students as much as their parents. To you, they are students. To us, they are our sons and our daughters. Tonight, you will have heard and will hear from a variety of parents, community leaders, doctors, teachers, and many others, providing critical feedback on this complex issue. Many opinions I agree with, and many I don't. This is a complex issue that does not have a one-size-fit-all solution. And it is because of this diverse professional and individual analysis that makes such a policy like universal masking fraught with problems and challenges, and is ultimately only going to be solved when we get back to our roots as a nation and understand that the freedom to decide is what is best for our families. When you remove that freedom, you remove your love for those students. In regards to some of the other critical decisions that need to be made, I have a few observations. First is that there are many states and local schools, states with public education systems and local schools, who have gone mask optional all year with very little impact. So we have both local and national precedent that this move to will not shutter LCS or create an unsafe environment, as some would make you believe. Next, one of LCS's recent challenges has been related to staffing. To solve this, I recommend that we follow in our neighboring county's footsteps and stop the labor-intensive and self-defeating contact tracing efforts. These efforts only serve to identify otherwise healthy students and teachers in keeping them out of our schools. Instead, let's stick to asking only those who are actually sick to stay home rather than quarantining healthy students and teachers. Finally, it has come to my attention that LCS is discriminating against and segregating students who are coming off of quarantine, singling them out and preventing them from fully engaging in the school once they return off their quarantine period, including healthy students being put into solitary confinement during lunch periods so that they can eat their lunch. They're literally brought to an empty room and told to sit alone to eat their lunch. That needs to stop immediately. Not only is it illegal, it's detrimental to many aspects of the student's emotional and social well-being.
Thank you, Mr. Glover.
And I'd be happy to provide evidence of this happening at multiple schools for the board to review to ensure that this behavior stops immediately.
Thank you, Mr. Glover.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker, Ryan Fields, is coming forward. And I am asking, I'm operating off of one sheet, if you are representing a group, state it, and I'm going to make sure that I'm trying to listen. But if not, you only have three minutes, all right? So the next person that I'm reading here is Ryan Fields.
Ladies and gentlemen of the board, my plea to you tonight is simple: Do away with mask mandates for Lynchburg City Schools. I know some would say continuing this protocol would be in alignment with the CDC, the WHO, or any other scientific group that has suggested to do so. Then I could refute that with scientific studies from scientists who have defected from those very groups, as well as other independent studies. But instead of debating one person's science over another's, I ask you to simply consider the example shown right here before us through Lynchburg City Schools. From the very day before this school year began, up until just last night, I have received emails from my son's school on a weekly basis, sometimes multiple emails per week, informing me of new staff and student cases of exposure, or cases and exposure to COVID. Some weeks have obviously seen more cases than others, but clearly, they have continued to surge up until the point of Linkhorn Elementary just a couple of months ago, and then just last week, E.C. Glass, having so many cases, they had to resort to shutting down the school and going to virtual in attempts to quell the large number of cases. I do thank you for your efforts to maintain a safe and adequate learning environment for our children, and I know that you will continue to do so in the future to the best of your abilities. However, based on the evidence shown from your own policies, masks are clearly not keeping cases out of our schools, and I ask that you would discontinue this policy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fields. Our next speaker, and again, I hope I'm getting this right, Sky Packard?
Packard.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Sky Packard. I'm a Lynchburg native, I was born a Virginia Baptist. I'm a father of three LCS students right now, and middle and high school, is rising senior, or graduating senior. And I'm a husband to a former LCS special education teacher. I'm here tonight to speak, obviously, to the governor's executive order number two, giving parents the right to choose. All three of my children have missed out on various experiences and activities due to the mandatory quarantine as a result of possible COVID exposures while at school and while they were wearing a mask, them and the other party that was possibly exposed to COVID. If the masks work, I don't understand the quarantine. When two people are masked and possibly one was exposed to COVID, why are we quarantining still for this extended time? The CDC itself has updated its statement and alludes to the fact that the paper and cloth masks no longer are effective. In other words, cloth, what is evident is the academic, emotional, and psychological damage being inflicted on our kids for the past two years. Every first grader at LCS has never attended school without a mask on, never seen their teacher's face, their teacher's smile, or the response from a fellow student's whole face. I think it's a bold statement to say that the children, by and large, have been, become well-adapted to a mask, and I don't know that I want to live somewhere where that's the case. As an appointed board, I feel it's very dangerous to start picking and choosing which executive orders to follow. Governor Youngkin campaigned on rescinding the mask mandate in schools and won the election, including here in Lynchburg City. Parents across the Commonwealth voted overwhelmingly that having a choice was best for their families. If you want your child to wear a mask, that is also a choice, and nobody is stopping any parent from asking their child to wear a mask. I feel regardless of how any of you arrived at the position on this board, I think this is not the battle that needs to be fought. I think the education situation that we're in currently, the failing SOL scores, should be a top priority, not where their parents should have the choice to mask their kids for seven hours a day. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker, representing LRCC Ward 1 delegation, Martin Missions. Martin here?
He had a work issue.
Thank you, Mr. Glover. Our next speaker will be Jennifer Stanton.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Stanton. I have an 11th grader at E.C. Glass, and my sophomore in college daughter went all the way through LCS as well. First, I want to thank you for your volunteer services to our city and your effort to put the safety of our community first, as you have navigated one difficult vote after another for the past two years. I want to take this opportunity to remind the board that the Virginia Constitution gives the power of daily supervision of public schools to local school boards. The new governor in Richmond is out of touch with what middle-class families with two working parents in central Virginia are facing. We depend on our public schools. We need teachers, administrators, bus drivers, cafeteria workers to stay healthy so our kids can stay in person. Kids need their teachers because their parents, certainly not me, aren't equipped to fill their shoes. Our students need free opportunities in performing arts and athletics that they have access to in public schools. Public schools are a place where kids can excel in these areas, even if parents can't afford travel teams or private musical training. Perhaps our new governor, who spends $40,000 a year for private education, can't relate to the critical role that students play in the lives of families like mine. We also need our kids in schools so that we can work to support our families. We need them to not bring COVID home with them. Families like mine have immunocompromised parents. I have lupus, I'm on immunosuppressants. It leaves my daughter in constant anxiety that she is going to be the one to bring COVID home and put her mom in the hospital. We can't afford a major medical event, as it would be a huge financial setback for most families in Lynchburg. We can't afford to become long-haulers or for our kids to be suddenly diagnosed with COVID-related type 1 diabetes, all because politicians are trying to abuse their executive power, go against the advice of the American Academy of Pediatrics and the CDC, and to bully school boards into allowing opt-outs for masking. We understand our friends who work at Centra are asking, begging for our help right now. Maybe in Richmond, with its prestigious medical schools and multiple hospital systems, they aren't at this point. But here in Lynchburg, our hospitals are full. I am glad that there are some things that cannot be undone by executive order. I am glad COVID mitigation masking decisions that will help keep our public school students, teachers, staff, administrators, and by extension, our community, healthy, isn't in the hands of Richmond. I feel better knowing that local school board members will continue to be able to listen to the health department and hospital system as they decide what to do about masking. I'm thankful for your service.
Thank you very much. Thank you, sir.
Unless there's a medical reason for not wearing a mask tonight, they need to put their mask on.
School Board Morrison, member Morrison, the board would concur, persons who have the appropriate accommodations know who they are. So we would ask that you would govern yourself accordingly. Our next speaker is Patrick West.
Hi there, Dr. Edwards and the board. Thanks for hearing what I've got to say. My name is Patrick West. I am a graduate of Lynchburg City Schools. I am a board-certified emergency medicine physician practicing in the Lynchburg General Hospital Emergency Department, and I am the father of two Lynchburg City Schools elementary school children. Okay? It seems like, and I'm sure you heard it from your legal team, you guys have two paths to choose going forwards here. I'm here to support universal masking as the right thing to do, both for our kids and for our community. And I've got two questions for you guys to consider as you make your decisions moving forward. Hopefully, that will lead you to the same conclusion that I've come to. First, what do our kids need? Our kids need to be in school. The American Academy of Pediatrics says they need to be in school. There's increased achievement, there is decreased anxiety, there's decreased depression, and parents can go to work when their kids are in school and not getting quarantined at home because they're sick, when they're not at home taking care of sick kids. That's what they need. What gets us to the point that kids stay in school? Masks get us there. If you look at the data that came from Arizona, where they compared two groups, unmasked and masked, the universal masking decreased the number of COVID exposures and quarantine days by three and a half times, just by universal masking. Masks work, and if you don't believe that study, you don't believe that masks work, then believe that our Lynchburg City Schools, we're doing something right with our mitigation policy right now. We are keeping, they're doing an unbelievable job, keeping our kids healthy, safe, and not having to quarantine at rates that we're seeing in other states that are not requiring masking. They're doing a great job. We are in the middle of an absolute flood of COVID right now. Don't take away the lifeboat that everyone's in right now. Don't take away their oars, the one thing that's helping them in this great job that they're doing. Don't change the plan right now. It's not the time. Second question, what does our community need? Okay? I'm tired of COVID. Y'all are tired of COVID. Everyone's tired of COVID, all right? But that doesn't mean COVID's done with us, okay? I'm not sure if any of you guys caught the update from the Centra leadership team, Chris Lewis, Matt Foster, they did a great job updating us on the 11th, on where we stand. And we're not in a minor Omicron surge. Right now, up to that point, the largest number of admitted patients in the Centra system was 131. Today, we're at 177. It's the most number of admitted patients that we've had, okay? Just to put that in perspective, we have 358 certified beds at our only hospital, Lynchburg General Hospital. That's half. Half of our beds are taken up with one diagnosis, okay? Our beds are full. They're trying to make more beds, but you can't manufacture doctors, nurses, techs. You can't do it. We don't have the staff to do that, so people back up into the waiting.
Thank you, Mr. West.
We need collective action. Every case means something. If we can use universal masking to decrease cases and to decrease every person, student, a bus driver that's in the hospital, that's an extra bed.
Thank you, Mr. West.
We have to treat patients. Thank you.
Our next speaker will be Kalen Snyder.
Hello, my name is Kalen Snyder, and I'm a junior at Heritage High School. I'm speaking today to encourage you all to vote in favor of keeping masks a requirement in the Lynchburg City Schools' Health Mitigation Plan. Being in person at school is important to both students and teachers. Masks have allowed us to stay in school in person and decrease the amount of people who are getting sick. The safety of students, faculty, and staff should be your top priority. Lifting this mandate would increase the amount of teacher absences, which greatly affect students and their ability to learn. I've seen this firsthand. Please also consider LCS families in your decision. As someone who lives in a multi-generational household with my grandparents and an immunocompromised sibling, bringing home COVID-19 from school could be detrimental. That is a lot less likely to happen if our schools are masked. Masks in schools are a necessity, and they keep our community safe. You have no doubt heard the opinions of many LCS parents that have opinions that differ from mine, but I encourage you to please listen to the voices of students. We are the ones who go to school to learn, even though we face the possibility of getting sick. We have sat at nearly empty lunch tables because our friends are battling COVID-19. We will be the ones who are directly affected by the decision that you make tonight. Thank you for your time, and thank you for listening. Please consider all these factors when making your decision.
Thank you, Ms. Snyder, student at Heritage High School. Next speaker is Robert Floyd.
I really didn't come to talk about the masks.
I really didn't come to talk about the masks. I came to talk about some other things, but you have made it.
Thank you, Mr. Floyd.
You know, when I listen to what grown folks say about what kids want, and I just hear this young lady, and that's a question I was going to ask, have y'all asked the kids what they want? Politics. You know, it's a shame that we got to play politics with people's lives. Everybody know that masks, masks can help prevent you going six feet under or in a hospital when you can't see your family members, or you might end up dying in the hospital. I don't, I don't understand it. It's right and wrong. Some people want to play politics, and I don't understand it. If you take statistics of what's going on in the school board, overall, what y'all have done to save people, to save kids, to keep the school going, is more of a plus than a negative. But then we got certain people that we need to take off the mask. It's like the lady said, you got a millionaire that's sending their kids to private school. They're not the middle-class or low-income type people. The parents might can't afford to do certain things because they got to go to work, and they tell our kid, no, put a mask on. They sixteen, seven, eighteen-year-old, sixteen, seventy, eighty-year-old parents today. And you don't tell your kid that's about two or three years younger than you to put a mask on or not to wear a mask? Or even you tell them, when you mention love, how you can tell somebody how somebody loves someone? That's what I don't understand. I know parents love the kids, and I know teachers love the kids. When I went to school, our teachers were our parents. They didn't even have the kind of parents. I had a mother that was a mother and father, but I still astray, done a few things I shouldn't have done. But we got to bring that back. If you can tell me that these kids are unsafe with masks on, then I understand. But you can't tell them they unsafe without masks because the hospitals all over the country. I watch the news all the time, Fox, CNN, you know, just to see what's going on on both sides, you know? And the argument is, okay, first thing I ran on, government, this is what I'm going to bring to the public. We're not going to wear masks because they voted me in, the ones that didn't want me to, didn't want the kids to wear masks. Would you want your kid to be six feet under, sixty years, I mean, in a hospital for about, you know, like two or three months? And then after they get over COVID, the after effects that people don't understand. Safe and sorry. While we have to, you know, it's right and wrong, what is a mask doing that making people want to go against a mask to save a kid's life?
Thank you, Mr. Floyd.
I don't understand it, you know? And I end with this. Make common sense. If a mask can save a life, why keep going against it? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Floyd. Our next speaker is Patty Powers.
Hi, Mrs. Board, thank you for this opportunity. I am a pediatric endocrinologist, I'm a pediatrician, I'm a local doctor, and I too am overwhelmed with COVID patients. However, the governor has issued this executive order, and here we are at a school board meeting, announced it relatively short notice to discuss this. And I must say, I'm rather surprised that we're even meeting to discuss this, but here we are. So Senate Bill 1303, which was passed last year, requires public schools to be open and requires schools to provide in-person instruction in a manner which adheres to the maximum extent practicable to any currently applicable, blech, too many applicables, mitigation strategies to reduce the transmission of COVID. So here we are trying to adhere to the CDC guidelines. Well, the CDC is an appointed body, it's not elected, and it's not legislative. And I have to tell you, looking at the advice from the CDC over the last year or two, their advice has changed. And so honestly, I don't find that all of their advice is consistent with current medical knowledge regarding the lack of efficacy of masks in reducing transmission. And last year I sent you all citations to that effect. The CDC has also ignored evidence that masks can cause harm, and last year I sent you research citations to that effect. So the CDC guidance is constantly in flux, which mitigation strategies do you choose? Masks are still under EUA status, and according to U.S. Code Section 360 BBB3, users must be informed of the significant known and potential benefits and risks of use and to the extent of which such benefits and risks are unknown. So masks are still EUA products and are thus by definition experimental and thus require the right to refuse. No one can be coerced to participate in a medical experiment and consent. Was that a gavel or was that?
Oh, indeed, go right ahead.
Thank you. So consent is absolutely essential. Children are below the age of consent, so consent thus legally resides with the parents. Comments on SB 1303 say that this law was never intended to mandate masks in schools, yet until now masks are still mandated. The SB 1303 guidance has been ambiguous and does not specifically state require masking. And I have to ask, what's in the best interest of the child? And then I also must ask if there are other reasons for your reluctance to implement Governor Youngkin's new executive order. Between the CARES Act and the American Relief Plan and the ESER I, II, and III plans, Lynchburg City Schools have received grants of $44 million-plus dollars. And schools must submit documentation every six months to show how they are carrying out those guidelines, masking and social distancing and quarantining, in accordance with the CDC guidelines. So if the LCS implements the executive order, there's a potential price to pay of the loss of $44 million.
Thank you, Dr. Powers.
Thank you very much. I ask you to place the decision back in the parent's hands.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Mr. Jeffrey Wooters.
Good evening. My name is Jeffrey Wooters. I'm a senior at EC Glass High School and Central Virginia Governor's School. Fairfax, Falls Church, Arlington, Alexandria, Loudoun, Prince William, Waynesboro, Albemarle, Charlottesville, Nelson, Lexington, Rockbridge, Montgomery, Fredericksburg, Stafford, Henrico, Richmond, Norfolk, Brunswick, Stanton, Southampton, Suffolk, Akimak, Frederick, and Manassas City. All these Virginia school districts have refused to allow their students to be used as political bargaining chips in a game that is being played by the current governor and his administration. Conservative and liberal districts, urban and rural districts, all have united to say they're going to keep the current plans in place. And it is at this moment when it is most important to make sure that we are doing everything possible to keep our children safe. You've heard commentary about Senate Bill 1303, which states, "For the purposes of this act, each school board shall adopt, implement, and when appropriate, update specific parameters for the provision of in-person instruction and provide such in-person instruction in a manner in which it adheres to the maximum extent practicable to any currently applicable mitigation strategies for early childhood care and education programs and elementary and secondary schools to reduce the transmission of COVID-19 that has been provided by the Federal Centers for Disease Control and Prevention." I don't know about you, but the CDC guidance seems pretty clear to me. It's a pretty uncomplicated issue. In fact, I can sum it up in three words, wear a mask. Our current governor sends his school, his kids, to an out-of-state school which requires masks while preaching to Virginia parents that they should send their students to schools that are ridden with disease to not wear masks, to make it their own personal choice, but the science doesn't support it. And if he doesn't even want it for his own kids, why should we want it for our students and our children's? I've been a student here for 13 years, and I know that my teachers and the school board want to do everything possible to keep me safe. Keep doing that and keep the universal masking policy in place for Lynchburg City Schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wooters, also a student in LCS. Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Nicole Sanders.
So thank you so much. That's a tough act to follow. I'm very proud of him, he's my son. So I am a parent, that is my son. As he said, he's been in LCS public schools since kindergarten. I am also an educational professional. I work at one of the local universities, at the University of Lynchburg. So first I want to thank you all for opening up public comment for an hour. I think it's really important that everybody gets a chance to speak their mind and give their viewpoint. And I think despite having different viewpoints on how to do this, we all have the same goal of keeping our schools open. I know from living with a senior that it's really important that he goes to school, and I think that the mental health issues that we might foresee from closing schools are very important to think about and address. And so I would urge you guys to consider keeping the mask policy as it is. In order to keep schools open, we have to have mitigation strategies. One of the most effective mitigation strategies is simply wearing a mask. As I mentioned, I teach at the University of Lynchburg. We have a firm mask policy, and students have to wear masks in any academic building. And our students do it. Our students cheer, well, maybe not cheerfully, but they comply because they want to keep the school open. They want to be able to go to class, they want to be able to see their friends, they want to be able to study in the library. And I maintain that it's the same thing for our K through 12 students. They want to go to school, they want to participate in their extracurricular activities. They want to see their teachers, they want to have labs, they want to have all of these experiences which I fear will be denied to them if we abandon all mitigation strategies in the midst of one of the highest surges of COVID that we've seen since the beginning of the pandemic. So again, I thank you all for your service, I thank you all for letting all of us speak, and I urge you as a parent to keep the mask policy as is.
Our next speaker is Vane Reynolds.
So we had a public health expert here, but not a single question specifically relating to children and how they're impacted physically or psychologically by COVID. So I think that's very telling. You could have, I think children and suicides are way up, so you could have asked them about that, but you didn't. So thank you for that. Thank you for having me here today to share my concerns. It is very important for us as parents to make sure that our children's needs are communicated and being met. But equally important is for you as the school board, our elected officials, to listen. Not just hear us, but listen to us and to be responsive to the needs of your community and what are really the needs of our children. Yet this body continues to expend great effort to avoid listening to the concerns of parents and the needs of our children. You limit in-person attendance, schedule meetings at inconvenient times, play games with the agenda to make it harder to speak, on and on and on. In 2020, the city of Lynchburg voted for President Biden by 2.5% margin. In 2021, running on an agenda that included ended mask mandates in schools, Glenn Youngkin won the city of Lynchburg by over a 10% margin. Twelve and a half point, twelve and a half point swing in only one year. That is very impressive. It certainly seems like the residents of the city of Lynchburg have spoken loud enough to be heard. But by pursuing this masking policy, you continue not to listen. You continue to adopt and implement policies detrimental to our children's learning and development, policies with no demonstrative effectiveness. They have proven to be harmful to our children's development and are at their core abusive. Making our children wear masks is child abuse. You are facilitating and mandating child abuse. This board is willing to ignore the concerns of parents, the needs of children, and indeed ignore the actual child abuse taking place right here in our schools. They are doing this in pursuit of misguided policies that will do nothing to control the virus and are in fact designed to do little more than exert control and increase power. By voting to adopt this policy, the board is voting to accept child abuse for the sake of preserving their own power and control. As Lynchburg parents, we will continue to make ourselves heard. We will make ourselves heard at every opportunity, at every school board meeting. And make no mistake, we will make ourselves heard in November 2022, just as we did in November 2021. Will you finally listen then? For those members of the board who vote to adopt this policy, I recommend you hold on to your masks. You will need them to hide the shame of showing your face in public. People are waking to the permanent damages these policies are creating. Your legacy will be one of abuse and betrayal. You will be remembered as child abusers who cared nothing about, nothing about our children and more about their own power and control. But it is not too late to say enough. Enough of the policies that aren't making our society safer but are sacrificing our children's mental, emotional, and physical health. It is time for a return to normal life for ourselves and for our children. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. Our next speaker, Dr. Colby Hutchinson Jr., representing the NAACP.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Madam Superintendent, first of all, let me express our deepest appreciation for your selfless time. You all have so many issues that you're confronted with. I reminded, as I saw my friend Councilman Farady here tonight, that your work sometimes is even greater than their work. I've been on that side of the fence, and I'm not, I wouldn't relish all that you have to do and all that you're confronted with. However, I do represent a group of people who are over 500 people. And they're parents, they're children, they're citizens, they vote. They do the same things that everybody else does in the city of Lynchburg. And I encourage you on their behalf, after having spoken with so many of them over the past couple of weeks, to maintain and keep the policies in place that you have now. I respect the fact that we respect each other enough tonight that the majority, overwhelming majority of us wore our masks. I'm a Christian pastor, I'm a Christian by birth and by choice, and so I have two things to say. One of those, Dr. Coleman, is that love your neighbor and wear your mask. That's the first thing. And the second thing, if you choose to not do that and not care enough about our children to encourage them to do that and to provide policies for them to do that, contact your local funeral director, make prearrangements, you might need them.
Thank you, Dr. Hutchinson. Our last public comment from the public in person, I believe I have Skylar Hanson.
Good evening, everyone, school board. I want to let you know that I also don't relish the task you all have. Your work is so appreciated, and I know this must be hard. I am a mom of a fifth grader in LCS, and I'm also a mom of a sophomore who goes to Randolph College. And I want to urge you to please keep the mask mandate in place. At Randolph College, my son has been in a dorm, on campus, in a dining hall, and there have been no outbreaks for him, for most of the children. The sports teams were the only ones who've had any sort of outbreak. And, you know, that's kind of for obvious reasons because they don't wear their masks when they're practicing. The training has been fine for all of the kids who wear their masks. My daughter wears her mask every day to school, she wears it on the bus. She doesn't have a problem. All of her friends, you know, they wear their masks, they dress them, and they're cute, and they match their outfit, and they don't mind it. And I think it's a very small sacrifice to put a piece of cloth on in the interest of public health. I feel like, you know, what's happening right now is this enormous surge in COVID, and it's worse than anything we've seen. And I just feel so shocked that we're considering getting rid of masks right now when we know that they work. We know that this is a proven mitigation strategy. they work. We know that this is a proven mitigation strategy. We know that we need to use any mitigation strategies we can that are effective, because there are so many people getting sick right now from COVID. And the, the transmissibility of this new variant is so much worse, and the numbers have just been absolutely horrifying to me. I, I really don't understand why we would want to take away mitigation strategies right now. We should be adding more. I would like perhaps every child to be given N95 masks at school, every teacher, every, every bus driver, every person who works in the cafeteria. I would like to look at additional mitigation strategies, you know, ventilation and all of those other things, rather than taking them away. And, you know, I understand parent choice, and, you know, I, I do agree that parents should be able to make decisions about their children. But I think the decision here is, do you keep them in public school or not? Because I think really, the only choice for public school is either mask up or shut down. And I think that's really the bottom line. We need to keep the masks, or we are going to have to close. And nobody wants that. It's bad for the kids. Their education will suffer. There won't be staff to staff the schools if everyone's sick. And we're already running on such thin margins. You know, we need to keep these mitigation strategies in place.
Thank you, Ms. Hanson. We appreciate your comments.
Thank you. And I, I will end by saying that please love your neighbor and, and wear a mask. Thank you.
All right. The chair is going to ask, how much time do we have remaining in our hour? So, we have 12 minutes. So, I'm going to ask that we would kind of go back and forth. Dr. Carter will begin by reading one of the written emails, and then we'll hear one voicemail, and she'll read one and go that way in fairness of both of those. Dr. Carter.
I strongly urge LCS to require universal indoor masking for students for the remainder of the school year as per the latest CDC and AAP guidance. Given the outbreak of the highly transmissible Omicron variant in our community, indoor masking in schools is essentially a no-brainer. Even vaccinated individuals can get and spread COVID-19, and while they will be well protected against getting seriously ill, they still may transmit the virus, particularly to those who are unvaccinated. While children are thankfully less likely to die or require hospitalizations than adults, many are still developing long-term symptoms from the virus. The governor is misguided in his latest executive order, and we cannot risk the health and welfare of our students just so he can score political points. Thank you. Craig Cole, parent of LCS elementary student.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Carter. Now, we'll do one of the voicemails, then we'll come back to the written.
Hello. I would like to have this message played at the January 21st, 2022 special board meeting coming up tomorrow. Please. Good evening to the Lynchburg City Schools' Board and those in attendance. My name is Dr. Justin Hensley. I reside with my wife and four boys at 1915 Mimosa Drive in the Bedford Hills area. Three of our four boys attend Bedford Hills Elementary School in grades one, three, and five. As a recent transplant from Kentucky, we were pleased to see the city of Lynchburg and Lynchburg City Schools taking COVID-19 more seriously than our former local and state governments. I hope that the outcome of today's meeting will continue that good judgment for the sake of all Lynchburg citizens. Our oldest son, a fifth grade student at Bedford Hills, is part of the special needs program and is medically fragile in addition to his mental disabilities. While he may seem like a special case, I'm aware of multiple other families who have children who are medically fragile and attend Lynchburg City Schools as well. I speak today on behalf of my family and especially my medically fragile son. I would be remiss in stating that masking solves all the problems that COVID-19 has brought to our families and our community. However, I would also be remiss in not stating that masking does make a difference. Scientific evidence, even outside of CDC recommendations, provides proof that proper masking reduces COVID-19 transmission rates. While we all realize masks will not stop the spread of COVID-19 in Lynchburg City Schools, we should also realize that the simple task of putting on a mask can help save someone else from potentially getting sick and possibly facing an even worse outcome. The simple task of masking has been helping our children stay in school this school year, and it does not make sense to stop the masking now. In addressing the reason for this meeting, I think it's important for the Lynchburg City Schools Board and those in attendance to remember the difference between the executive and legislative branches of government. While executive orders can provide a stopgap measure, they were never intended to or, or, or are allowed to supersede laws set forth by the legislative branch of government. I implore the, employ the Lynchburg City Schools Board to abide by the existing law, keep masking in place, and continue to coordinate with state officials while the validity of the executive order is determined. Lastly, I'd like to say thank you to this Lynchburg City School Board and all those who have worked tirelessly as part of Lynchburg City Schools to continue the motto, "Every child by name and need to graduation." Your dedication and hard work is greatly appreciated. Thank you for your time today.
Thank you very much. Dr. Carter.
First, I'd like to extend my condolences to the school board that must navigate an impossible, depressing situation it has been placed in by political stunt or questionable legality that prioritizes cultural division over public health. Three of my four children still attend LCS, as did my wife and I some 35 years ago. We have always trusted that LCS would provide a safe environment for our children, and at the very least, not contribute to a tragic public health emergency that endangers our vulnerable family members and has killed nearly a million Americans. My great aunt is turning 90 years old this year, also an LCS graduate plus a multiple pandemic survivor, and until last year was completely independent. In the midst of this, of the pandemic, 2021, she had an emergency knee replacement. The recovery has been long, but she is steadily regaining that independence. She even rides an exercise bike twice a day. Me and my wife and three school-aged kids have been helping her through all of this, the surgery, hospitalization, recovery, and therapy, just like a good family does, but constantly in fear that we would, that we would, despite taking every precaution, expose and potentially cause her death. But we need, but she needs us, and we love her. If you do not act, she will not see the kids until Omicron is over. Her risk is serious, despite getting three shots in her arm and wearing a mask, not to save it, not to save herself, but because she is afraid of infecting us. So, it's just, so it'll just be me visiting her, and I'll have to think seriously about wearing a mask while in her home, unable to even know if I'm exposing her. The denials of this virus, the amplification and normalization of falsifiable lies, and the subsequent social manipulation and demonetization of literally anything that could actually fix the problem have contributed to the ways of variants killing our country folks, and even depleted our supply of tests to the point where the only place I could get them was the federal government. But they're only sending four. There are five of us in the house, so who should get one? My 10-year-old Lily, who has happily attended the ghost center since third grade, half of it remote, this was her chance to be with her friends after a year and a half. When should I tell her? When she's awake in the middle of the night because she's afraid that one of her friends might get the virus? That's a true story, and it happened more than once. Maybe you should have to tell her to her face. I'll never be able to give her these years back, but she will remember your decision forever. States that do not have mask policies in place have more hospitalizations and death. CDC attached, CDC study attached. Haven't we had enough? Please do not make your first act of 2022 one that puts more lives at risk, including ours. My children deserve a right to an education. How can they be expected to weigh these options over something as simple as a mask? Can we, how can we, how can you? Please help us. Kevin Bryant.
Thank you, Dr. Carter. Our next voicemail, voice message?
Hi, my name is Dora Purvis, and the subject I'd like to address is the LCS Health Mitigation Plan. I believe the LCS family is made up of intelligent, caring individuals who are truly concerned about our community and the health and safety of our faculty, staff, students, and their extended families. And I want to thank Dr. Edwards for her efforts to keep the schools open in these difficult circumstances. And as we know, there is a lot of false information circulating everywhere, and everyone has opinions. So, we should stick with the facts. Since we have now been dealing with COVID for over two years, I'm sure there have been many peer-reviewed studies that the CDC, FDA, hospitals, or other medical organizations have performed. Providing these peer-reviewed studies to the public would allow the school board and the LCS families to make informed decisions. So, that being said, I would like to ask Dr. Edwards and the school board to provide the following documents to the public. Peer-reviewed studies of the effectiveness of masks in preventing the spread of COVID, and this is especially important to include medical masks and the N95 masks. Two, peer-reviewed studies of the effectiveness of social distancing in preventing the spread of COVID. Three, peer-reviewed studies of the psychological effects of mask wearing. Four, peer-reviewed studies of the developmental effects of mask wearing. Five, peer-reviewed studies of the effectiveness of the experimental vaccines put out by Pfizer, Moderna, and Johnson &amp; Johnson. Six, peer-reviewed studies of the safety of the experimental vaccines put out by Pfizer, Moderna, and Johnson &amp; Johnson. Number seven, a timeline of when the FDA-approved vaccine will be made available to the public, and if it will be effective on all the variants, both present and future. So, as an educational organization, we should always look to well-documented and peer-reviewed information on which to base our decisions. By providing these documents to all of us, we can avoid emotional or political opinions and make educated and informed decisions instead. I'm sure you would agree that LCS, which has always stood for excellence in education, should continue that excellence by providing the community and the school board with the needed information to objectively make such important decisions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Dr. Carter.
Do we have a time limit?
I know.
Okay.
Right, right.
To whom it may concern, I want to thank the Lynchburg City School System for its continued diligence and commitment to the health, safety, and well-being of the children, staff, and communities that faithfully depend on them. I do not deny your, do not immit your position today. You have a crucial and historic decision to make that could protect the entire community during the surmounting waves of the virus. Unfortunately, those who agree with the recent executive order will unfairly judge you for remaining steadfast and cautious. I beg you to proceed with the caution and care you have promoted historically. You have certainly gained my family's respect and trust during these trying times. As a parent who takes my family health, my family's health and safety seriously, I cannot with good conscience send my children back to school because of the removal of the current mask policy, because the removal of the current mask policy would deliberately expose them to the virus. It would be a difficult choice, but I would not, but I would be more, but I would be without options. So, if you submit to the pressures of those who are putting children, communities, cities, and the state at risk, I ask for one simple favor. Allow the parents who put their children's health and safety first, and safety first, access to remote learning until the pandemic subsides. If you decide to acquiesce to the executive order, then you open the enrollment to then, oh, excuse me. If you decide to acquiesce to the executive order, you then reopen the enrollment to remote learning options for parents and students who desire to remain safe from exposure. It is my deepest hope that the Lynchburg City will remain steadfast against risk and continue your legacy of putting the health and safety of the community first. I hope you will remain as logical and compassionate as you have demonstrated since the pandemic began. I hope you will be all the things that you have come to be known for, like fairness, civility, empathy, understanding, and honesty. I implore you most emphatically to continue to be on the right side of history as you traverse the unknown worlds of a worldwide pandemic that has claimed the lives of untold millions. My heart and hopes are with you as you proceed with your historic and weighted decision. You have my sympathy, you have my sympathy. Mother of four Lynchburg City children and former Perrymont Hilltopper Sandusky Middle School student and heritage pioneer in the number one Big Orange country, Emily Larkin-Bryant.
Thank you, Dr. Carter.
Twenty-one seconds left.
All right. This chair has done the best I could to make sure that the hour was used in the best way possible. And so, we want to thank Mr. Hargit.
Mr. Chair, understanding that there is one voicemail and three emails left, according to my tabulation, I would suggest that we dispense with the rules, and let's go ahead and finish this out, so everyone who wanted to have a voice has had a voice.
The chair has no objection. Any board member have any objection with that? All right, proceed. The last voicemail, voice message, I should say.
My name is Sarah West, and I am an infectious disease physician and mother of two LCS elementary school students. And I urge you to continue to keep our kids in school for in-person learning by complying with Virginia State Law and recommendations from the CDC, Infectious Disease Society of America, Pediatric Infectious Disease Society of America, American Academy of Pediatrics, Virginia Academy of Pediatrics, and other public health experts by supporting continued universal masking in K through 12 schools. In-person learning is the most important goal of the American Academy of Pediatrics, and the CDC recommends universal indoor masking by all students, staff, teachers, and visitors to K through 12 schools, regardless of vaccination status. It's part of a multi-layered mitigation strategy that includes testing, tracing, isolating, vaccinating, distancing. The governor's executive order, taking away universal masking, removes one of the most effective layers of protection that we have to keep LCS in session and open for every child by name and by need. Part of the reasoning stated in this executive order is that children cannot wear masks effectively. However, I know kids can wear masks appropriately. My children ages three, six, and eight do it consistently. It is normal for them. I can't get my eight-year-old to stop wearing shorts when there's ice on the ground, but he wears his mask no problem. My children spent all of last year remote learning, and I can personally attest to the importance of in-person learning. My children love being back at school and are thriving there, just as all the research suggests. Mrs. Steele, the principal, and our school nurse, and all the teachers and staff at Bedford Hills have done an amazing job keeping our kids in school and feeling comfortable with the school environment. Please do not take away their most reliable tools to keep their school open and their staff and students safe. One thing about universal masking versus only some people masking, non-respirator masks do provide some protection to the wearer, but they are actually source-controlled, meaning they are meant to keep the germs from the wearer away from other people. You not wearing a mask does not just affect your personal risk of infection, but it puts others in the room at risk by increasing infectious particles they inhale even when they are masked. You already have precedent in setting rules for what is considered safe clothing and behavior at school. As a community, we have agreed that certain clothing might not be appropriate for school. You have a dress code that includes no shirts with pictures of weapons and no flip-flops at school for safety reasons. Why is requiring masks for safety in the middle of a pandemic any different? The level of community transmission of the highly transmissible coronavirus variant is in the highest-risk category. High risk for test positivity rate is greater than 10%, but today's data from VDH shows that almost 40% of our tests were positive, indicating that there are many infected people in our community who don't know that they're infected. This is absolutely the wrong time to drop any measures that have been keeping kids in school. And if anything, I ask that you continue this program. My young children have told me that they will not feel safe at school if there are people there without masks. They deserve to feel safe at school. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Carter will read the remaining written email.
Okay. Hello, my name is Madeline Phillips, and I am a sixth grade and seventh grade science teacher for the Lynchburg City Schools. I was also once a student at LCS. While I was a student, I was always, I always felt that my school would do everything in its power to make sure that I was safe at all times. However, with the potential implementation of this new policy, that viewpoint might change. Contracting COVID-19 poses a serious risk to many individuals in our city. By allowing our students to attend school in large numbers without masks, we put ourselves in a position that willingly lets the children we serve, our faculty and staff and their families, contract COVID-19. Being in school without a mask is not the same as running errands without a mask. These children are in school for seven hours a day, spending 1.5 hours or more in close quarters each block. This is more than enough time for anyone who has COVID to spread it to a large percentage of their classmates, who will, who will bring it home to their families. COVID-19 may present itself similarly to allergies, the COVID-19 may present itself similarly to allergies, the flu, or present no symptoms at all, which is why we are fighting an all-time high caseload in the schools, in our city and in the nation. And I'm not saying that we need to have masks in school for the rest of our days, but if we make the conscious decision to suddenly get rid of masks when cases are at an all-time high, we are not taking the safety of our children, faculty, and staff seriously. LCS has an obligation to keep the safety of its students, faculty, and staff at its highest priority, which is why I suggest we continue to keep the mask mandate in place. I understand that the schools may not be in total control of this situation. If we end up deciding to get rid of the mask mandate, the school system needs to expand its virtual academy or the ability of students to opt into virtual learning. Families who want to keep their children and themselves safe by having students attend school virtually should absolutely have the option to do so without an enrollment limit on virtual learning. This situation goes beyond whatever concerns the students the school system may have for children's participation or attendance virtually. This is a matter of safety, and if the school system stops enforcing the mask mandate, families need to be able to choose for themselves whether they want their children to attend in person or virtually. Thank you for your time, Madeline Phillips. Dear Lynchburg City School Board, School Board of Directors, I am a parent of children at three schools within the district, and I am firmly in support of continuing a mask, of continuing a mask policy for indoor classrooms and the bus use while our community experiences its highest COVID surge since the pandemic began. During childbirth this past year, I had to labor, I had to labor while wearing a mask until it was time to push. And again, after my son was born, I was not, it was not, I was not a highlight, it was not a highlight of my year, but I did so to help protect the healthcare workers who cared for me and my infant. Likewise, their, their use of masks protected us. My older children have willingly and easily worn masks for the, for nearly two years, both at school and whenever we were in public indoor spaces. We are happy to do so to help protect the most vulnerable of our community. My asthmatic family members have had zero problems with masks, and with vulnerable, and with vulnerable elderly grandparents in our home, we are grateful that we are able to avoid contracting COVID for nearly 18 months, thanks to those who wore masks in our community. I am ashamed that member, the members of our community do not teach their children that wearing a mask is a mild inconvenience to help protect each other, instead claiming that policies regarding mask-wearing during global pandemics somehow infringe on personal freedoms. And dismayed that certain political leaders have not cared for our teachers and healthcare providers who are so valiantly putting their own health at risk to serve our community by trying to appeal to the sense of patriotism and duty in those who are baffling anti-masking, bafflingly anti-masking. This is a movement for unity and for working together for the greater good, not endangering others through rugged individualism. My children and I continue to wear masks for as long as our community remains in a COVID surge. I hope that the school board feels empowered to stand up for the health of our children, their teachers, custodians, bus drivers, and administrators, and for all our families. Please continue to require masks indoors with COVID finally being, until COVID finally begins to subside as a serious threat to our community. Thank you for your consideration, Meredith Kahn. And the last one is, Dear Lynchburg City School Board, my name is Michelle Minetti. I am a parent of two children who currently attend Lynchburg City Schools, and writing, writing you today to voice my concerns that the board is going to find, that the board is going to find a means to get around the executive order recently signed by Governor Youngkin. When people went to the polls last fall, they voted to be heard, as a lot of parents voicing concerns at the school board meeting were clearly not being listened to. Governor Youngkin has done what a large number of parents wanted him to do. I support the, I support his order of making masks optional in the classroom. Parents who are still concerned about COVID have the options of getting their children vaccinated, masking up, and going to virtual learning. Please do not box the rest of us parents into a corner when all we want is for our children to return to some sort, some sort of normalcy. Children are at low risk of having a severe case of COVID, yet they are paying the biggest price. A recent Brown University study has shown that social distancing measures, including masks, have caused a drop in children's development. I'm not sure that the COVID kids will ever catch up to the pre-, post-COVID kids, both educationally and socially, if we continue on this path. Finally, I believe we, it speaks volumes when the school board chooses to follow a former, former governor's directives and ignore those of a current sitting governor. Thank you for your time, and yes, Michelle Minetti. And that's...
Thank you, Dr. Carter. At this time, we have heard all that we have at this present time. And so I want to thank all of you who, let me restate, the school board wants to thank all of you who took the time out to come in person. We want to take, thank all of those who took the time to send in their emails as well as their voice messages, and we have taken the time to hear every one of them. And so at this time, it would conclude the public comment section of this special meeting. We will now move forward to our next item, which is a discussion on our LCS Health Mitigation Plan. I do want to, first of all, acknowledge tonight that we would like Dr. Edwards to give us comments, but whether we are an elected or appointed school board, there are 132 school boards in Virginia, we take very seriously our role in board governance, given to us by the Virginia Constitution and the statute. And so this is a very important matter tonight, and so we have come together here from our superintendent. And after Dr. Edwards has shared, I'm going to ask, starting with Mr. Harvey and going around to Mr. Trust, for each school board member to share their thoughts, comments, maybe any questions around their support for the existing LCS Health Mitigation Plan or any modifications. And after everyone has had an opportunity to speak, then the chair will entertain appropriate action from there. Dr. Edwards.
Okay. Close it to the mic here. So thank you, and again, thank you to everyone who came out tonight to share their thoughts and opinions, who sent written comments and voicemails, voice messages with us. We are definitely in trying times. We've been there for two years. I think the one thing we can all agree on is that no one in this room, no one in this area caused this, yet we're all feeling the brunt of it. We do have a duty to educate children, and we are committed at Lynchburg City Schools to keep our doors open, and we have spent a lot of time and energy since the start of this pandemic. You remember, in 2020, we were completely virtual. The fall of 2020, we started virtual, and then we went back to in-person. At the end of last school year, we were committed to keeping schools open five days a week, and we have done that with the exception of some challenges that we had with staffing, which in part was due to COVID-related cases and also just staffing shortages in general, which the entire community is feeling in multiple professions, just not the education profession. I would say on behalf of my staff that they are doing everything they can for the children of Lynchburg City Schools. They work tirelessly in the classroom, outside the classroom. I don't think anyone has any idea how much time it takes to really keep our doors open for when our staff are doing calls, checking on families, and we're not just calling so that we can fill out a form. We're calling because we're concerned about our students. We're calling because we're concerned about our families. We're calling when we hear there was a sleepover. We want to make sure everyone is safe. And those calls go beyond the school hours. They go beyond Monday through Friday. They go into the weekend. That's the kind of dedication that you have from Lynchburg City Schools staff. They have made sacrifices. They have come to work every day in the midst of confusion, unknown. They too are frontline workers. They sit in front of our children every single day, and they bring their A-game to our kids. This issue is facing all of us, and as a sitting superintendent, who also has children of my own, none of which here, but I do have a daughter that's in high school in New Jersey, facing the same thing, it's tough. But when I listen to the students and when I look out and see my staff, I feel the duty to protect them to the best of my ability. And if that means that my wearing a mask, while it's uncomfortable, while right now I'm getting used to this KN95, which punches your nose, and it's not ideal, it's not a fashion statement, but if this is stopping the spread of COVID that I may have, I may be asymptomatic. If I'm protecting even one child or one staff member, it is worth it for me to be inconvenienced during this time, this season of COVID. There was a time right before Delta, there was a little two weeks, when we thought we could take our masks off. I think we did, for a bit, in our own offices, in small groups, and then Delta happened, and we changed. As the virus changes, we change. You heard Dr. Gately talk about surges in this community. You heard our healthcare workers saying, please, do this for us. I care about them too. They have families, they want to go home, they're experiencing staff shortages. I care about people who have to have elective surgery, and maybe you can't get it because of COVID. I care about this community. I care enough to be inconvenienced to continue wearing a mask, to follow CDC guidance. I'm not a medical doctor. I have to trust. I care enough to continue. I heard two students tonight speak to me, two students, two students who spend seven hours a day in our schools. Some of the folks who spoke, some of the folks who have been sending information, don't do what those two students do. Those two students spoke. So from this seat, yes, I would like to recommend that we stay put with our current guidelines, that we continue to wear masks as we keep evaluating what this COVID, Omicron, is doing in our community. I'm hopeful we'll get to a place where we could take the mask off. I'd be the first one to celebrate. But until we get there, until we can see hospitals back where people can go have elective surgery without that, the safest cause of action right now is to stay put. And that's not to say that I don't value rights of parents, because I am a parent. I do value rights of parents. In fact, I value the rights of all parents. And folks who say we don't listen, we do listen. The messages are different, the wants are different, their requests are different. They are. We hear you. We hear the parents who want choice. We hear the parents who are concerned about fragile individuals in our school. It is a public school, and for some of our kids, they don't get to choose where they go. They have to come to us, and we have to keep them safe to the best of our ability. And for that reason, I'm recommending to this school board that we stay put with masks, that we continue to be open-minded and listen to the science, that we continue our partnership with VDH. We do everything we can to lessen the spread. Get vaccinated if you can, get boosted if you can, do all that we can as a community to come together. And let's hope that eventually we'll get on the other side of this, where we can take these masks off and see smiling faces and be a bigger community because of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Edwards. Mr. Harvey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to thank everyone for coming and speaking tonight. I want to thank everyone for sharing their thoughts via email. Many have spoken much more eloquently than I will be able to speak here tonight, but I am of the opinion that I will support maintaining our current mask policy, and I make that decision for several reasons. When I look at the legal issues with the Governor's Executive Order Number Two versus SB 1303 and the legal counsel that we received as a school board, that seems to be inconclusive in making a final definite decision for, for me. When I listen to students, as we've heard two students here tonight, the feedback I get overwhelmingly is in favor of masks. When I listen to staff, the feedback I receive overfamally, overwhelmingly, is in favor of masks. When I listen to parents, overwhelming majority speak to maintaining masks. I kept count of tonight, those who spoke in favor and those who spoke against, and it was three to one. But more importantly, I listen to medical professionals. I myself have done some investigation and speaking with doctors from different walks of life and getting their opinion, and overwhelmingly, they spoke in favor of masks. One doctor in particular gave me the analogy, he said, "If you ever watched a medical show, the doctors performing the operation are in protective sterile gear and masks. They do not do that for themselves, but for the protection of their patients." That, to me, speaks volumes. The use of masks is more about empathy than it is about anything else. It's about the golden rule. It's about thinking of other people. And as Dr. Edwards eloquently stated, I will be more than happy to be inconvenienced to wear a mask if doing so shows my fellow citizens of Lynchburg, if it shows our students and our classrooms and our staff that I do, in fact, love them, that I do care for them, and I do want to keep them safe. So I will be supporting Lynchburg City Schools' Health Mitigation Plan to maintain universal mask-wearing.
Thank you, Mr. Harvey. Dr. Gupta?
Thank you, Dr. Coleman. You know, I've been very consistent. When initial policy was voted in, it was voted in with a vote of eight to one, and I was the one against it, not for the reason that I don't like masks. Means if I put my hand in my pocket, you will see I carry my mask. So it's not against that I don't like masks and I'm not doing, putting my finger in the air, looking at the polls, saying where the wind is blowing. But I truly believe that we cannot mandate things on people, that they have the choice. They should pick what they want to do. We are an educated society. Lynchburg is the most literate district among all the local districts, so people can make the right choice and as they see deemed appropriate. For me, personally, masking is, is appropriate, and I always carry KN95, although the CDC has come up with that cloth mask or the paper mask, as some people pointed out, may not be good enough. But I have not mandated others to put KN95 or 95 based on their availability, as they deem appropriate, which one is the better one for them to put on. But I, I continue my belief that the mandates are not appropriate for us as a society, so I'll stay against it, as I have in the past. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gupta. Dr. Sinha?
Well, thank you for giving me a chance to share my thoughts on this. I've really, really debated this and have gone back and forth, sought legal counsel on my own. I've read a lot and done research, so I bear with me while I go through my prepared statement. SB 1303, the law passed by the Virginia Legislature in 2021, requires each school board to provide such in-person instruction in a manner in which it adheres to the maximum extent practicable to any currently applicable mitigation strategies, and on and on, provided by the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention. That is the law. A legislature passed that law. The CDC... The CDC recommends universal indoor masking by all students ages two years and older, staff, teachers, and visitors to K-12 schools regardless of vaccination status. At our August 3, 2021, meeting, this board by a seven to two vote, and I did check that in the minutes, voted to approve a mask mandate for the start of the 2122 school year. That vote predates Public Health Emergency Order 10 of August 12, issued in conjunction with Executive Order 79 that required universal masking in all Virginia K-12 schools. Governor Yonkin's Executive Order EO2 rescinds EO79 and terminates the Public Health Emergency Order 10. It does not prohibit mask mandates, nor does it revoke school board authority to enact mask mandates. And now I quote two-time Republican Lieutenant Governor Bill Bowling, "Local school boards do not work for the governor. They are not part, they are part of local government, not state government. They do not report to the governor. Many local school boards are independently elected in their respective county or city. Many others are appointed by their local Board of Supervisors, and in our case, city council. They ultimately report to their local citizens or the local Board of Supervisor, city council, not the governor. As such, the governor's ability to direct the actions of a local school division through an executive order is very suspect as a matter of law." This is Republican Lieutenant Governor Bill Bowling. Executive Order Number Two does not supersede the law as written in SB 1303. Again, quoting Bill Bowling, "Executive orders are not the same as law. An executive order cannot unilaterally reverse existing law. Established law will always take precedent over an executive order. A governor does not have unchecked authority, and we should all fear a system that would give any elected official unchecked authority." Lynchburg City is more valuable to COVID, more vulnerable to COVID than 80% of U.S. counties. Higher vulnerability communities like Lynchburg have pre-existing economic, social, and physical conditions that make it hard to respond to and recover from a COVID outbreak. Our current metrics bear this out. The infection rate, test positivity rate, and hospital capacity are at critical levels. Additionally, our Mississippi-level vaccination rate and prevailing anti-mask pigheadedness do not help matters. Collectively, these factors weaken LCS's capacity to provide continuous in-person education. LCS's adherence to CDC medication recommendations has proven effective at containing COVID spread within our schools, in spite of rapid spread outside our schools. Intermittent and disruptive staff-critical situations, sometimes requiring remote instruction for three or more days, are a consequence of community spread, not mask ineffectiveness. Although illness from Omicron variant has been less severe than illness from the original coronavirus strain, COVID remains a serious and potentially debilitating and deadly disease, especially for unvaccinated and high-risk individuals, including children. Several correlates of severe disease or debilitating effects, such as long COVID, have been identified, yet much is still unknown about this disease. And finally, LCS students are disproportionately low-income and non-white, meaning a disproportionate share of our students and their families are at higher risk for COVID infection, hospitalization, and death. Mask-wearing may be framed as a personal choice, but like cigarettes and secondhand smoke, it is a choice that has negative health consequences for other students, and by extension, their families, teachers, and LCA staff. It's for these reasons that I hold that our mask mandate should continue with no opt-out provision as required in Executive Order Two. Thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Sinha. Dr. Neillis.
Yeah, I struggled with this also. I have serious concerns about the legality of the executive order. It's not clear that, as Dr. Sinha indicated, that the executive order supersedes legislation. I mean, I voted for governor. I didn't vote for an emperor to issue decrees, so that was pretty disappointing. And frankly, the optics of this are pretty bad, that this comes out when this peak is running through the country, the state, and our locality. Having said that, I don't see any off-ramp at all for masking. It frankly is, the sense is we're pursuing a zero-COVID outcome here, and you know, that's just not going to happen. We implemented a mask policy a long time ago, and I was against it, voted against it, and I'm not going to support continuing the mask policy either. It's, I will, I wear a mask, but I really have a problem with mandates of this type. The science, such as it is for COVID, is like, get your shots. That helps. Masking, I mean, I've looked into it, there seems to be some modest benefit to masking. Now, if you're going strictly N-95 and you're really rigorous about it, yeah, that probably helps. When I see people around town, at work, the mask usage is probably a little casual. I really wonder how effective that is. And I do want to say there's a lot of anxiety and stress out there, but it's like we're treating the kids like disease vectors. They're just walking around, and we have to keep them all segregated and separate. And there are repercussions and negative consequences with masking and these mandates, and we see it in the behaviors that are in schools now. Kids' emotional development, how they interact with peers is affected. You know, we're setting a policy, and there's no 100% right answer. There's going to be consequences to whatever direction we go down. You know, we closed schools. At the time, it seemed like the right thing to do, you know, and looking back, it's like that was a big mistake. I'm not sure that, not, I'm not sure that continuing the mask policing isn't just kind of continuing that same mindset, it's just a lesser degree of strictness. I do notice that other schools around the country and, you know, the locality, they kept in, the schools kept going. They're not masking in schools, students aren't masking in schools. They don't seem to be centers of transmission. There's always been concern about schools being centers of transmission, and that hasn't been the case. You know, I'll concede that can change. You know, we need to be ready to, you know, to, you know, pull back from whatever position that we end up with, but I haven't seen or heard any off-ramp for this policy. It's just going to go on and on and on, and I think you should wear a mask, but I think it should be your choice. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Neillis. Dr. Carter.
I had looked at, the goal for this year was to make sure that students were able to stay in school five days a week. And so far, we've done pretty good with that, and given, especially given some of the challenges. And I know we've had maybe four schools that had to be taken off from in-person to Linkhorn, Sheffield, and EC Glass was the last, I thought there was another one. But, and that was just for a brief period of time, but that was one of our goals. And just looking at the signs and the guidelines for the CDC, they're looking at multi-layer mitigation strategies, and one is a simple one, is masking. And not saying that we have to do this all of the time, or there may not be an off-ramp, but I feel there will be. The only thing is now to release or to even relax this when we're at the peak of this peak, this is now more than was last year, will be, to me, will be just risky for us, and also, I just see it as being troublesome and can be resulting in so many children and people becoming sick. And studies have shown that in the COVID-19 cases, in areas with schools without masking, that there's a larger number of cases of COVID-19 in areas there. And we also talk about, I've heard about, children going home to parents that may have some health problems. Well, we have children right in school that are going to be sitting right next to another person that have underlying health conditions that can be detrimental if they contract COVID-19 or, and we're also talking about now, we have Delta variants, that's still going on, that hasn't gone away. And we have the Omicron and whatever other variants there may be, and we're talking about putting, this is real, I heard from the students and the teachers that are in those schools. And we can say, well, we want to say, we may be in offices where we're by ourselves, but we're talking about childrens and children that are in school, and teachers that are in school, and the other staff that are there, and you see children getting off the bus, and they're coming in, it could be like a herd of elephants coming towards you, if you're seeing that now the mask mandate is relaxed. Also, I just thought it was interesting how, last week, we talk about science and following guidance and all, but last week, we listened to the meteorologists, and if you look at WSCT, it's George Flickinger, and now we talk about, we don't want to follow science, but how many of us went to the grocery store and went and got milk and cheese and eggs? How many of us did that? And also made sure we knew where our shovels were, and that we got the ice out and salt out? How many of us did that? So I'm thinking now, so maybe we need the meteorologists to tell us to wear masks, because we listen. But I am in support of continuing of the mask, to continue what we're doing and without a doubt.
Thank you, Dr. Carter. Ms. Morrison.
I'm going to simply say, I do have a daughter in Lynchburg City Schools. She's a teacher, she's there every day. I have three grandchildren in Lynchburg City Schools, actually, I have four. I forgot about the one in here.
We won't tell them.
But, so I do hear from them about what's going on in school, and I am the grandparent that picks them up sometimes, and I see the kids walking out of school in masks. It is our job to keep our schools open for in-person learning. We made that a goal, and we've been doing it to the best of our ability. And I think to be able to continue that, we have to maintain the mask mandate until we're at a point where we have as much control over this situation as we can possibly have, from both the medical and the community. So I will support it.
Thank you, Ms. Morrison. Dr. Brennan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I had a long, detailed presentation, most of which has been taken over by our comments, by our public comments and by our board members, so I will try to modify it. But I first also want to thank everyone who's come here tonight, to the public session and all the emails and the voicemails that we all received. I know that all of us have read them. We appreciate them, we respect everyone's opinion, and we really appreciate your input. I also want to particularly point out Jeffrey Woodruff, who's been with us before for board meetings to make comments. I particularly want to point out Caitlin Snyder, who was nice enough to write an email and also come, and I want to point out her mother, Katie Snyder, who is a former board member of Lynchburg City Schools, for being here tonight too. So thank you all for being here, along with everyone else that took the time to do that. So it's no surprise to my fellow board members and everyone who's listening that I will support the fact that we're going to continue to wear masks, requiring masks in the schools. I know that that's not a surprise to anyone. Putting the science aside, as an individual board member, as some of my fellow board members already said, I think that the Governor's Order puts Lynchburg City Schools in conflict with Senate Bill 1303 that requires us to follow CDC guidelines. It also conflicts with federal policies that require that students who are on buses have to wear masks, and how we deal with that if they weren't masked in school. And then finally, at our last board meeting, we put in a new policy that states that individuals who are exposed to COVID or have COVID will be out for five days and come back and be masked for an additional five days. We're going to figure out what we do with that policy. So there's a lot of details in the process that I think need to be worked out, and I think we're going to get more information from the Department of Health, I think we're going to get information from the Virginia Supreme Court, and we're going to learn more things in the coming future, but for now, I'm going to support keeping where we are. So what people may be surprised by is that until the onset of the Omicron surge, I was very much in favor of reviewing our mitigation policy, because I think things have changed. You know, clearly, the COVID information, the COVID process has been an evolving science, and we, as a school board, need to evolve with that, and I think that's very important. I do think that some of the processes we put in place have not been as beneficial as we hoped they would, and some of them have had negative impact, and we need to review those, and we need to go back and revise them based on the current science. But over the last couple of weeks, we all know that things have changed, which has been said a lot, and Omicron surge has made a huge difference. Now we're dealing with the largest number of cases in our community, in our schools, and absenteeism, so it really is a major issue that affects that. I think we all know now that we have five tools that we can use to help prevent COVID. One is vaccination, one is physical distancing, one is ventilation in our schools, one is testing, and one is masks. And none of them are perfect. Even immunizations, we know, are not 100% perfect, but they have been remarkably effective in saving lives, particularly in the elderly, and it's been a huge benefit for our country and for the world. But on the other hand, I have to agree with Dr. Neillis, there is not a lot of clear information about the mask in school systems. It really has been difficult to look at, and partly because children are clearly not as susceptible to infection as adults are, so they're not, you know, spread it as well, and they're not nearly affected by it, so it's a bit hard to nail that down. As Dr. Gately pointed out, in the UK, they have, since the onset of the pandemic, have not required masks in children 12 years old and younger in their schools, and have done well with that. They've not had to close their schools, probably related to the phenomenon of how children handle the virus. And they are, as of Monday, going to make it so that all students in their school system do not have to wear a mask. Now, the UK is on the downswing of their Omicron surge, and the UK has an immunization rate of all individuals above 12 years old of 84%, which unfortunately, we don't have, and we're not on the downswing. So I do think that we should look at our mitigation plan. I think we should look at masks, I think we should have an intelligent conversation, but as has been said over and over again, I don't think now is the time. I think we need to wait for the Omicron surge to go. I think that we truly are, in our schools and in our hospitals and our community, we're fighting a raging fire. There's no time to turn the fire trucks around, because one may not be as good as the others. We need all the fire trucks together to work as best they can. So tonight, I'll vote in favor of maintaining the current masking guidelines for all students for now, and I cast that vote in the hope we're protecting, as Dr. Gupta says, our most precious commodities, who are students and our staff, both teachers and our support staff. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Dr. Brennan. Mr. Trolls.
Well, I get the benefit of hearing everyone else, and many have taken the words out of my mouth. I probably, I'm most likely aligned with Dr. Neillis and Dr. Brennan. If it were up to me, I, like Dr. Gupta, do not care for mandates. I'm not a fan of masks personally. As one of our esteemed presenters, Dr. Powers, indicated, I think they do have negative impacts. With that said... With that said, and I've struggled with this, I think the timing is really poor for us to back away from the mask mandates. And it's difficult for me to say, but as Dr. Brennan expressed and Dr. Gately, we're at a surge here, and it's just not the time to back down. And I could go on, among other reasons, our presenters made many, many very good valid points, the least of which, given my legal background, I think the legislation is an issue. And I think the legislation probably does supersede, and based on the council that provided us in our closed meeting, I think we really don't have many options to us as a school board, other than to continue with the mandate at this time. I do implore our school board to revisit this issue as soon as we get through this latest surge, praying that we don't have another surge of something else coming. And I will make this comment. I am very grateful that we see this type of energy coming out for the masks. I want to see this type of energy, time, and commitment coming out for us getting back to reading, writing, and math. Those things, as we've seen before, are critical issues. And I would submit to you, as critical, if not more critical, than this mask issue. So the people here tonight, I'd love to see your time and energy come out to help us attack that issue and close this achievement gap that we are struggling with here in the city. That's what I ask of you. I will support continuing with the effect of the mask mandate.
Thank you, Mr. Trolls. And I would just conclude by continuing Mr. Trolls' last statement. I have in my notes, beginning with student achievement. Student achievement for all students matters to this board member. Student achievement for all students matters. It is extremely important to me. I've shared before this board and the public in the past that I have a type one diabetic daughter who is brilliant. She's far smarter than her father and mother combined. She did not do well with remote learning or virtual learning at all. Now that she is back in the classroom, she has resumed her performance of A, et cetera, in her advanced classes. And so for me, it is very important for student achievement, for all students, that we keep our schools open, that our staff, we have a very good staff. We have people in front of our kids in all subject matters, for the most part, who care about the kids. And we want to keep them safe and we want to keep them able to come to work. And so to that end, if I'm going to error, ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to error on the side of the safety of our students and staff. Lastly, I want to say that I listen, this board listens. It is my hope that this community will do what this community does incredibly well, far better than most communities. And that is to stay together and make sure that students are learning and get the help that they need. I've worked in the governor's office, I've listened to people who agree or disagree with what I've just said. And I'm listening. And I hope that whatever the comments will be after this meeting is over, that it will not include the language that the Lynchburg City School Board is not listening to the public. Having stated that, I will be supporting the Lynchburg City Schools' health mitigation plan as it has been in place up to this point. Chair is willing to entertain a motion only to affirm this. We want to be able to go on record as a governance team that respects our right given to us by the Constitution and the statute, and we have come tonight to do that. Is there a motion that we can vote on at this time, up or down?
I'll move, I move that we continue...
Thank you so much.
Whatever. I'll, I move that we continue the mask mandate with no allowable parental opt-out as provisioned in Executive Order Two. And continue to keep the situation under review as we determined we would do when we voted seven to two back in August on a mask mandate.
All right, there is a motion on the floor. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Morrison, a motion made by Dr. Senha. Is there any further questions or discussions on the motion at hand to continue the health mitigation plan as we have had up to this point? And continue with that until otherwise noted.
Dr. Gupta.
Dr. Gupta, please, you know you have the floor. Go right ahead, Dr. Gupta.
I'll correct myself. I apologize, I think Dr. Neillis voted last time no too, so I said eight to one, it was seven to two. And I do agree with Attorney Trolls, we need to focus on achievement gap. That should be the prime focus going forward. If you have any topic, any resources, that should go towards achievement gap, reducing that achievement gap. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gupta. Any further questions or discussion on the motion? If you vote yes, you are voting in favor for us to stay where we have been until otherwise notified. If you vote no, that would mean that you want this motion to fail and there would be some other motion that would be presented. Madam Clerk, would you please call the rule?
School Board Member Charles.
Yes.
School Board Member Dr. Brennan.
Yes.
School Board Member Ms. Morrison.
Yes.
School Board Member Dr. Carter.
Yes.
School Board Member Dr. Coleman.
Yes.
School Board Member Dr. Neillis.
No.
School Board Member Dr. Senha.
Yes.
School Board Member Dr. Gupta. School Board Member Mr. Harvey.
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to two.
Meeting steps adjourned.